Are we mostly adopting?
Yeah.
Do we need?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any edits? Yeah. Need any edits to it? Didn't you want to add something? No.
Just go over it on the public.
Under highways.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm gonna do it under highway.
Okay.
That way Danny's here.
Okay. The minutes, do you need a motion to accept the minutes as written or?
Do we have them?
Yep.
These minutes have got some serious problems.
Wait a minute, I corrected the time, wait a minute.
Yeah, there you go.
Friday. Yeah, we've got Friday, so we're on to the last meeting.
Not, not the Monday. You only have four. I haven't done, I haven't done three sets of minutes, does anybody care? I have twenty five hours of comp time so far, I can finish the minutes. No, no, no. Okay. I can get that up to forty.
So should we be doing the minutes of November four?
November four.
November eight. The only minutes you have are the ones in front of you. You have the minutes of November four.
It's on either end, I know. Right.
How come they got funded?
Well, then we should adjust our agenda because it says on our agenda we're going to approve the minutes of November four.
Well, we'll read.
We've got those.
This is the eighth. November eighth.
That one to me looks like November fourth to me.
That is.
We have two sets of minutes, November fourth and November eighth.
You got two?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have it though.
I didn't get it.
Well, you should have November fourth, yeah, that's.
I just got the eighth, and I don't see it.
So technically, we need to amend the agenda for the fourth and the eighth.
But I don't have the eighth.
I have the eighth.
You don't want to use these, these are so stupid.
They're right in front of you.
Yeah.
But I mean, do we really, does it really make, can we go back and then, I mean, is it really necessary? Why don't we just do the minutes of the fourth and the eighth?
What's different than this one?
Oh. This is the eighth.
Oh, you're just, uh...
You want the eighth?
Yeah.
So why don't we just say approve the minutes of the fourth and the eighth instead?
But the minutes are not.
Don't approve the minutes of the fourth. I know I sent them to you a long time ago, you're not aware of them, don't do them.
Alright, can I?
You're November eighth, which you had in front of you, now you probably have seven copies on your desk, but you generally had five on you.
So we...
Alright, so let's, we need amendment, we need a motion to either correct or accept the minutes of November eighth. Yes, November eighth only? Which is not all of them. Corrected, I found and corrected, and we can correct again the time, it was at nine AM, not ten. No, maybe it was at ten.
What else?
Maybe it was at ten. No, it was not at ten. No, no.
That was the budget, the budget meeting.
Oh, no, you're right, it was at ten.
No, it was at ten.
It started at nine, probably nine, ten. And we went three hours. It was at nine o'clock in the town hall. Wait a minute.
The budget meeting started at ten.
Ten, yeah. This is a meeting where you... Oh, you're right, sorry. What you did on Tuesday night. Yeah, this is the, this is the...
This is the town plan.
Yeah, the town plan, sorry, you're right, nine o'clock. Actually, uh, this is the, when we met on the eighth, wasn't that actually the continuation? Didn't we adjourn?
That's right.
Re-convene?
Yes.
That's right.
So, we actually met on the eighth, but it was a continuation of the fourth.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
So, so the chair called me to order, no, the chair called the...
Recom-.
Recom-. Recom-. Need to order, yeah, right. The chair recom-. Okay.
Might want to reset that.
Sorry?
Minutes, it only has one.
Very tough.
Yeah, same if I corrected that one, I'll give us another set of minutes, I think it's something. Did I do it twice? Sure. So are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? In the first, the paragraph labeled one. Yes. About where the T comes in draft, goes through town planning, commissions is misspelled. See what I'm saying? Abutting town planning commission. Got it?
I got it.
Oh, yeah. It's got a zero on it.
Any other additions or corrections? Any others? Yeah, there's a question. Under two, it says Al Sands at that point forwarded to Dave Culver that Wyndham report. Yep, that's what you did. Are we all set on the corrections, additions?
Is the adjournment time need to be adjusted as well, or?
Yeah, that's probably eleven. No, it started at nine, no, that's right. No, I think that's right.
Okay.
So if there are no further, all in favor of approving the corrected minutes, say ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ask if anybody moved. Yeah, I thought we did. No, you have a motion to, uh... Oh, okay. On the agenda.
So, so...
Second.
Okay, alright. Okay, now that we have a motion, a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, the minutes as adjusted, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, we gotta put off the November fourth.
Yeah, we'll do that at the next meeting, yeah. And the warrants were signed by everybody, does it remind you, the warrants already again? Yeah, those warrants, I can, somebody did, the warrants are, uh, the eighth, November eighth warrants. Yeah, the new ones are ready, so anybody can check them out. Alright, Danny, highway report.
You guys want to do the fire alarm?
Sure.
They're putting their first.
We're gonna do both of these now, or we're gonna do? There really isn't, ours goes off at least three times a day for no reason. Yeah, I know. And, uh, it's gonna get to the point where we're gonna completely ignore it, and then something's gonna happen. And it's three hundred and forty-nine dollars. True, as far as I know, we can't get rid of the phone line, but I think we should, I think we should, I, I mean, my suggestion, you do both of them. Do both. Pardon me? Do both, get rid of the phone line, I'm open.
You can't get rid of, you can't.
Because if you read the letter, it says, because we're on, we're on fiber, fiber is so fast, and we're on plain, POCS stands for Plain Old Telephone System, okay, that's what it stands for. And because we're on POCS, it's gonna go away, and then we're gonna have to do it. So let's just do it. And, and I called the lady, as I wrote you guys an email today, to find out what happens if the power goes off, and if we're not there, if we're there, we just switch over the power, but if we're not there, it has eight hours of battery, that's what she said. If you haven't used it. So, and so, I don't know if that's the actual case, but I think we can check when they come to see where the heck that battery power is and double check that. But if it has eight hours of battery, like she says, that's about seven more than our phone count, so, there you are. Well, you have, we, both town hall and this garage has generators, so this will be a... This garage isn't the problem, the town hall is.
Because the town hall is automatic.
Why is the town?
No, but I mean, somebody's gonna turn it on in eight hours, no?
You would think so.
I want you to talk to that. I mean, somebody, I mean, it would seem to me that if, if there's an outage in the village, somebody is gonna go down and change it over within maybe an hour, hour and a half, certainly not gonna wait ten days. Well, what we wanted to be sure is that, that there was some backup, and she says it's an eight hour backup. Now, Danny, uh, I think, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Danny asked was why the big difference in cost? If you look at the letter, it's different equipment.
Yeah.
It's, it's two different kinds of equipment, and it, and also, I would presume, and we could ask them that to be specific about it, you've got about four things on the, on the siren down here, and you got one up at the town hall.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
And so, it looks like it's a completely different system, um, just looking at the letter, they're, they're described completely differently. The, uh, town garage is a, it is installed Honeywell IP slash LTE communicator, and in our, and at the town hall, it would be an IP LTE communicator, no, it was something else. Honeywell seventy-eight forty-seven. Yeah, the Honeywell, yeah, it's all, yeah. So... I don't think you have a choice. I mean, if, if the old telephone line thing is gonna go bye-bye, I mean, I have it in, I have it in my house with ADT, it's been there for five, six years, I never have an issue with it. I mean, that's, if you look at the town plan, we're supposed to upgrade all our systems anyway, so...
Well, even if you look at the thousand dollars, I mean, that's three years of that phone bill, so after three years, that, you're even.
And, and three years is, is a good payback, generally.
Yeah. Because you're paying almost four hundred dollars a year for that one telephone line, just for the fire alarm.
Yeah. And, and it might just happen to be that POCS, whatever they want to call it, might come sooner than later, and maybe after another year and a half, you don't, you'd have to do it anyway.
The technician who is here did say that these systems are not designed for the fiber that day, actually, so...
So this installation is to update the system so they are fiber optic.
Uh, could be wireless internet area, I think that's what that is.
Do you have BTEL phones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aren't they fiber optic?
Yes, but these systems are designed for the old copper wire.
They were put in, Kathy, I believe, they were put on before fiber optic came.
I don't think they have a system that really goes to the fiber. So it goes off to the internet or the wireless.
And this is the fire alarm only, right, change?
One, one for the town hall.
Right.
We only have fire, Kathy, we don't have anything else.
Well, they do.
In the town hall, and the town hall is fire only, that's all we have. Up here, it's about four or five different things.
Up here, you have, what are they different, you have like four or five things on it.
So your, your septic alarm, that's all tied into this?
Yes, I think it's the septic, it's smoke, it's heat.
CO.
CO, it's, well, actually, CO, yeah, CO, but it's also room temperature heat. So, out in the shop, they can't do smoke because the trucks would set them off.
Correct.
So they're heat sensors.
Right.
And then there's a heat sensor, so if the furnace goes out, there's one for that heat, so there's four or five up here.
So the town hall doesn't have CO2?
No, CO, it would be CO, but no.
Don't you think that's something, I mean, if the boiler failed, or something happened to the chimney, and people could die because of it? We have, we have detectors. We do.
I mean, it's, it's always something that you could add into the panel.
No, but if we have, if you have battery operated ones that we have, then that's... I'm, well, I'm not sure they're not hardwired, I don't know what they are.
You might have to be bothered.
I think the reason the CO here is because of all the vehicles. And I'm not sure if the COs will even wire it in, because our truck sets off a fan every time to start it, so, I don't, maybe a higher number for that system than what the fans come on.
And why are you gonna kind of set alarms, are there other bids?
That's who installed it. They currently do the service.
If you want to change it, Kathy, then you gotta change, you gotta change the whole thing, it's gonna cost you a lot of money, I mean... It would cost us, just advertise the bid, it would cost us three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Make a motion and go with two proposals as written, and... Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Stan, would you?
I'll, I'll second, but I want, I want to discuss.
Speak.
The, I mean, a thousand twenty-nine, are we gonna try to find that somewhere, I mean, that is, there's nothing in the budget, I mean, this is this year's budget, it's not next year's budget. Uh, you know, you can, you can say that four hundred dollars of this, for this year, is the phone bill alone, but you still got, um, seven hundred, whatever, after.
Wait, Kathy, you're saying four hundred, what was the monthly on that one line, it was a hundred and forty dollars a month?
No, no, it's thirty-seven or forty, forty dollars a month. Four hundred dollars a year, roughly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, you could have the motion and said that you don't do it until, you know, July of, of two thousand and twenty, if that's what you're concerned about.
No, I just, no, it's not, because if we don't, then technically, if we're not gonna do this until like next July, then I know a level of concern is that we should bring back the second, the second phone line here, so then you're gonna invest another, whatever it is, four hundred dollars or three hundred and fifty dollars for that phone line, waiting to get this into the budget, that's, that's my own.
Plus, they're gonna charge to come back down for the change of wiring around it, paying on for the phone.
Yeah. I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have an investment if you put this off, I'm just, I'm just concerned about...
I think, I think there's enough money in it, I wouldn't worry about it.
Works for me, I just wanted to make sure it's off.
Do you have building maintenance?
There is, I don't know what's left.
Yeah, I, Kathy, I don't think there's a problem, you know, I mean, we can talk to Kim, but I don't think there's an issue. If it was five thousand dollars, it might be another story, but... I mean, you have, we have capital budget money for the computer and, and other things, so... And the town hall, we could always take it out of there, I guess, if, if there was a problem, right? So, alright, any, any other discussion?
So this is thirteen seventy-eight for combination of both of these, plus the phone bills on both?
Only one.
One phone bill?
Uh, for the town garage, not, not on the town hall.
Well, you wanna know what the total phone bills are, Kathy?
Well, I'm just, I'm just doing some math in my head on much, this is expensive, and...
But this is the...
The only reason I asked if you were doing other bids or looking at other things is to save some money, but if you're not gonna save any money.
Well, you can't do any other bids unless you want to bid out the whole bomb system.
Right.
And I think that, that'll cost you more than this. So you change your propane companies, you gotta change your tanks, and you're gonna change your system, and... Bill? I understand, it's a one-time cost. Yeah, it's a one-time cost. So until this goes out of date twenty years from now, you're not gonna pay again. Whereas the phone bill, you pay everyone.
I only want a phone, so that's something else.
Most of us will be here in years from now. Call a question. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Other highway issue?
Bill, you pass that on to Kim or whoever was working with this.
Yeah, but, but, but as a caveat, if we don't fix the system in the town hall, I wouldn't do anything to these people. I mean, that's ridiculous, they keep going off every, every day. They've gotta fix the town hall. But Bill's absolutely, whoever said it, I mean, it might not be a false alarm, and everybody, you know, whatever.
It's because they switched it to the bad number, everything does what's going on.
They, they have given a whole bunch of excuses, none of which are true. They say, you're using the facts, and it's, and they're trying, it's trying to signal back an automatic signal. No, no one's using the facts, no one's using anything, no one's even calling out, no one's answering the phone, no one's doing nothing, and it just goes off. I was sitting there by myself at four-thirty, not doing an amp thing, except working on, on the computer on something else, and not online, not on anything, and it went off, so... I mean, I don't understand why the company can't fix it. I mean, I had an issue with my ADT where there was a false alarm, the guys come in, and he didn't change one of the CO2 contained things, and they expired. So it went off again, and I called them, they wanted to charge me, I said, you don't charge me anything, I said, you, your technician failed to change the smoke detector, whatever the detector was. They came in and they fixed it, that was the end of it, they came in the next day. I mean, I, I don't understand why you can't get response from this company, maybe it is, maybe Kathy's right, maybe, I mean, it is at the right company, I don't know.
I have ADT, and I have no problem. They give a systems check, and they give you...
But he was gonna give them thirteen hundred bucks, and they can't even fix the, the one we have. Well, they say the problem is the phone line. I would, uh, can we add some stipulation that we proceed with this on a promise that it's gonna fix the problem? Whatever condition you want, but I'll, I'll convey it to them. Well, why don't we, we, somebody can talk to Kim, and she can make that condition. I mean, it's approved, but we're not gonna go forward, and if it doesn't work, then we want our money back. We're not giving them that money if it doesn't fix the problem.
That's probably it, we just won.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. Danny, you got other highway issues? Okay, but, no, so if they say, no, we're not gonna take that condition, then what are you, what do you want to do? Because it's gotta be fixed now.
You put it in.
You do it.
You just do it, and then they work and they...
And then we don't tell them.
Then you, you know, you hold back something till later.
Right.
No, you do the project.
Alright, Danny, go ahead.
So I, we always buy liquids from Innovative Service Solutions, our chloride, and we add bi-liquid for the salt in the winter. This year, ended up with almost a whole tank full of chloride leftover, and I have to buy a truckload for them to deliver, so I have three thousand gallons of chloride, and I can't have nothing to do with it. If it was only like a five hundred gallons or something, I'd dump it in the sand pile and use it as treating that, but three thousand gallons is like almost two thousand dollars that you're dumping. So I asked them about another tank, and they printed off a contract, and I just gave it to Bill tonight, um, for a three thousand gallon tank, and it's over thirty-three hundred, like thirty-five hundred dollars to purchase it, but they said what they do a lot of times is they sign an agreement that we still buy like twelve, twelve thousand gallons a year of liquids from them, and they will give us the tank to use as long as we're buying from them. Bill's gonna look that contract over, and then we decide about it the next meeting, but I just gave that Kim.
Now, just give the salt, why, the salt's a different color.
This is a different salt.
Yes.
It is dry.
Yeah.
It's quite a bit better salt, I think.
Okay. Well, you used to put a, your other liquid was blue, wasn't it, or something?
The salt itself is a different color.
Yeah.
The liquid we put on is a, is a blue liquid, but this is just a lot whiter colored salt to begin with. It's a lot drier than what we've gotten in the past, different companies, so, uh, we gotta recalibrate all the trucks, because tonight, we salted before the storm, so it looks like a lot there, it's not really that much salt, but, just because of...
So you can put less down, because it's dry, is that what you're saying?
Well, it works better, because it's not full of moisture to start with.
Oh, okay.
So, so, like, tonight, what you're seeing is roughly about two hundred pounds per two lane mile.
Two hundred pounds?
Per mile. So, it's a lot, I, well, the last storm, I salted everything in town with a little freight liner, and I never raised the side dump, never saw the change, so I used like a half a bucket.
Wow.
Where before, if you salted a whole town in the normal, you come back and reload because of the way, just the way it's performing, so, it's a little bit different, it looks like a lot on the road, so...
Is the cost different?
It's fifty cents a ton cheaper right now, and it's coming out of New York.
Yeah, the company, but, so... The liquid, is that the only company?
So, no, uh, Innovative is huge, they pretty much do just liquids, um, we have done this similar deal in the past with Allstate, which does chip sealing and pay doing and stuff like that. But they, this company is cheaper than, um, that, than Allstate was, Allstate used to buy the liquids from this company, we backed out.
So we're not really locking ourselves into a bad company?
The way, the way I read the contract is that any time that we don't like it anymore, we just don't come get your tank, and we're, we're done. So it doesn't look like there's anything that holds us for so many years or anything, it says up to three years for this, but if you, they're not happy, they take it, we're not happy, they can take it, but that's why I give it to Bill.
Okay. Well, we'll put that on the next agenda.
Yeah.
You have any other issues?
The heat in this building, it's quiet right now, but really, it sounded like the fan was running. That is the heating system. We've had problems over, since day one, that we fought with them over. We get codes on the, the circulator pumps in the mechanical room, which says dry run, and we've been back and forth now with the plumbers and the electricians on what the problem is. A guy came out last week that is like salesman for the brand of the pumps that are in there, and said that it wasn't wired right. So we had the electricians come up, so we're gonna bill on that, looked at it, went to web, and they're like, no, this can be done this way, it's gonna cost more to change it over when it sounds like air, but the plumbers say, no, it's not air, everybody else says air. I'd like to build a different company. I've been sticking with the companies that did the work when we built it, but...
There's a, there's a mechanical contractor in, in ARC in Vermont, they do, that's what they do, is they do industrial mechanical.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to anybody.
ARC.
It's a really elaborate system, and I think some of these old schools...
That's the problem with this high-tech stuff now.
When, I mean, when the one comes on in the office, it's noisy, while the guy, the electrician was here, who knows what happened, but a pump quit, and we had to put a new pump in. Now they don't even make the pumps that we have, so it's a small, different version of the original one, so...
Smart pumps.
Okay, I don't know, but...
Well, that's what they, they, they changed their speed, it isn't just like they kick on and do their thing, they changed their speed based on BTUs, and it's just very complicated.
So, we need a different company, and I don't know who to go to, so...
My suggestion is that we go back to our general contractor, and say, look, this is the issue we've had since day one, we haven't got any satisfaction dealing directly with electrical people and the plumbing people, they all blame that one another, go back, we should go back to the general contractor and say, what do you recommend?
DEW or McMillan?
There's, there's no warranty on the bill.
Well, you get a year or...
The warranty would be gone, but still, if DEW is a reputable company...
Right.
They ought to say, yeah, we've had some problems with so-and-so, and we steer you in this direction. At least you get a, some, maybe some kind of foundation, you know?
Who's DEW, sorry?
They were the contractors.
This one.
Yeah, DEW or McMillan.
I think that's, I think that's, that's a great starting point. Just see what they say.
So you want me to call them, then?
Yeah, sure, you know what you're...
I think it's better you do it, Danny, because you know what the issues are, you can...
And you know how many people have been in here.
Yeah, you're... And if they don't give you any satisfaction, then I, then I guess, you know, I understand, you mentioned the company, I don't know how we...
ARC.
Where do they come from?
They're Vermont somewhere, I don't...
Just seems like...
That's a local?
Give them a chance anyways. Give them a chance anyways.
Yeah, I agree.
But I've, yeah, I've told the ones that actually did the work for the contractor, but.
The problem today with all this high-tech stuff.
It's great where it works.
Really a problem. You're right. When it doesn't work, and a lot of the people don't really know how to fix this stuff.
That is what's going on.
They have a little fashion.
They're calling back to their suppliers, they're on the web and going, "Okay, it's doing this and it's, you know, and it's obvious air. You can hear it." So it's getting air in the system somewhere, which is getting worse and worse. But there's an automatic bleeder back there that apparently is not working either. I, uh, call somebody on that.
Any other?
Well, you have top, uh, one, one, one under.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, I had, I had this thing on the, the logging issue, uh, on, up on Route 121 West, going into Wyndham on the right-hand side. I was surprised. I mean, it, to me, the, the logging job, uh, it, it's probably just so obvious because they cut the trees literally, uh, right up to the edge of the road. And it, my thought was, of course, they shouldn't be cutting in the right-of-way. And then I hear it's the right-of-way. They own it, so they can do whatever they want in the right-of-way. So that's, that's kinda new information for me. I thought they had to stay out of the town.
Better business.
The only thing I guess we could have to do is fill out the form for working in the right-of-way. There's no fee or anything. It's just a form. But it is, it is their land.
Then, then why do, why do we issue permits to work in our right-of-way?
Because it's our right-of-way, but.
But then they work in our right-of-way.
Yeah, they quit damaging roads. That's why they get the permit, I think. Yes, Bill?
If you're working in the right-of-way and you're doing something to our right-of-way, the, the right-of-way permit is for you to put up money so you put the right-of-way back as it was. If you cut the trees along the right-of-way, you're not gonna put the tree back, so I don't think we really could.
Right, but if they did something to the road in the process.
No, not if they did the road in the process. That's a completely different thing. If they get a permit and they do something for the road in the process, we have a, we have a way to go back at it. If, if the logger screwed up our road, um, I don't know what you, even go after him, but it has, it has nothing to do with the right-of-way permit. That's screwing up our road.
But we don't have a fee on working in the right-of-way. It's only for driveway accesses and logging accesses.
If, if they, if they said, let's say they were gonna drag the logs across the road to, to landing on the other side of the road.
They needed.
Then they would need an access permit so that they would put the road back the way they found it before, if we would allow them to do that. Then we would have a, the, the access permit would say, "No, no, they have to do it. Put up a bond, probably more than five hundred dollars." And, and then we would have, hold that over until we fix the road up, yes. But just working like they're working and not working in the road.
Well, they probably cut the trees from, from the property, not from the wall or from the, from the road. So there would be no damage to the road.
Shouldn't.
There shouldn't be unless something happened.
Shouldn't.
I haven't seen anything in the road. I would just amaze that, that. I've always thought the rule was, but I'm thinking about it, it was probably in the regulations in Springfield. If you're doing a logging operation in Springfield, but I think it's zoning regulation, you can't cut within forty, fifty feet of the road. I forget what the exact setback is. You can't cut those trees. So I, I just surprised that they, they cut them that close to the road. And I also was a little bit surprised that they made such a mess of the forest and, and it left their slash and crap everywhere. You know, that, that really surprised me because I would think they, for PR, they, they wouldn't be such a messy loggers right on the road, but hey.
Totally.
It's one of the cleaner-looking logging jobs I've seen around. If they're not chipping.
But it's good to know that we don't have any right, as I talked to Al before. If, if he has to go get a, uh, for, for current use, if he has to file a plan, then what we need him to get know, and probably we should let the county forester know, when he gives out plans, we wanna see the plan. If it's near a public road. But if it's not a plan, then there isn't any law in Vermont that requires them to stay away from the road.
Depends on how the plan is written. You know, the, it's, it's a little bit like going to the doctor and they write you a, a prescription. So the forester writes a, a forestry prescription. And it could be that all that white pine that's along the edge of the road has grown such tight conditions so long, it has red rot. Red rot is, is a response of the trees because there's been too many, too long, and they're not growing quickly and healthy. So when you go in there and you start cutting them, you cut a few out, the next thing they'll blow over. So the opposite side of what you're looking at, saying, "Oh, that's ugly," is you, he could leave a buffer there. And then we're gonna be up there complaining when there's a north wind that blew all those trees out onto the road.
Then quite a few already.
And, and so, we're, we're looking at it as lay persons and we're looking at it from aesthetic. If the forester did their job, they're looking at it from science. Was, was there a forester involved with that, you think?
Yes, it's a forester job.
So I mean, so I, I don't think we have an issue really unless. So I don't know what the prescription was, but I'm saying, if the forester looked at it and he analyzed those trees and said, "We cut some of them. They're all gonna blow over. Let's cut them all so they don't come up." But we have no, we have no requirement, then we have to look at the, at the logger's prescription, don't we? Bill?
Uh, we've done earlier, I think Danny was going to talk to the logger and see if he can, can't get him now to cut everything in the right-of-way so it doesn't blow over on the road. And I, I think that's a good idea, but he should get some advice from you, yes.
Is this land we cut in private land or for, or national forests?
Right, no, no.
He bought it, I understand that he bought the property, he logged it.
No, not the same owners. He's, they hired this logger to log it.
Okay.
It's, now, now if you're going up the hill on the right, that's a different property owner, different, different job. Go on the right and the left as you go up the hill. That's separate.
This is part of.
Same logger, same logger logged on the right, but different, different, uh, foresters, so different prescriptions.
How many acres would they log in a day now?
It's quite a bit. They're gonna cut more.
Yeah.
So I, I would like you to give us your opinion. Do you want Danny to ask him if he cut all of them so they don't blow over, or you want to just leave it alone?
Well, it's nearly complete.
Well, I'm not, I'm not an expert, but I know that we did some, we did some trail work and we cut some trees down. And now I got blow downs because all of a sudden, the, the weaker trees were in a nestle then, and now they're exposed. And bingo, they come down with the first wind, so maybe that's a good idea. I don't know. I'm, you know, Alan, you would know more than I would.
Last storm, that last windstorm we had, I think there's three of them just on that flat that came down.
Right.
Just that one storm. There's, I think there's, before that, there was more, the storm before.
Right.
But if you don't like the looks of them being cut in the right-of-way, I don't know if you wanna cut the rest of them.
It'll look ugly for a little while, and then the raspberries and regeneration will come up and hide all that stuff.
Like across the road.
It sure won't look pretty for a little while.
But if it falls into the road, we have to clean it up, correct? So it costs us money. And, and it blocks the road or whatever.
The thing is, there's no power.
No, that's a good thing.
The bad thing is, if people drive and buying cars.
Right. Yes, that's right. And if it's coming from Wyndham and it's on towards the Grafton line, you gotta go all the way back.
Yeah.
And you have no doubt about that either?
The, the, the other part of this discussion leads me to what I brought up before, is having some more discussion about trees, right-of-ways. I mean, these are pine trees, but it could be ash trees that are down. And it's gonna be unsightly. I mean, it just seems like we ought to have, um, planned and, and thought about stuff. It's much easier to do before, before everybody's in here yelling and screaming at you.
But I thought we're gonna talk to the forester and see what he was gonna, I thought that was the.
We're gonna talk to tree.
Tree one, I'll turn it in. And, and said, well, he will make some recommendations. But I think, I think what Bill is asking the board is some, is some guidance for Danny. What, you wanna just leave it alone, or do you wanna have him cut all the trees in the town right-of-way? I mean, I think that's the issue.
Trees that are left are what species?
Mostly hardwood. There's one on the corner that, right where they have their logging access, that I was gonna ask about cutting it. It leans out. You can see where it's where, uh, one of the, a bigger truck hit it a few years ago. It's right tight, it's in a ditch. But the rest of them, there's not too many left down along the flat until you get down toward the black at top end. They left pretty good chunk right in there from the property line up through.
What are your thoughts?
Cut them.
I'd cut them just, like I said the last time, this last storm, there's three of them right there. They've opened, it's opened up so much now that the wind gets in there and takes them down. If you look at the trees, they're growing toward the sunlight. They're all leaning out over the road.
Too bad the trees that are cut weren't on the south side of the road. You get some daylight on the road.
So are they logging holes hard and softwood?
Yes.
So does anybody have, do we wanna make a motion? I mean, how do you, do you wanna just?
I would go with Danny's suggestion.
Let Danny use his discretion or something. I don't know.
I, I make a motion. We ask Danny to go look and evaluate it and use your judgments to what's right for the road.
Second?
I'll second.
Are you talking about the road or all the roads? Are we gonna cut?
No, no, just this logging operation, I think.
I don't, I don't know how you can just narrow it down to just one operation. You're either gonna do it for everybody or you're gonna do it for the one.
No.
So cut everything in the right-of-way.
Then you, what you need is a tree warden that reacts to every time we have a, if somebody pulls his lumbering stuff in there and goes look at the guy's plan. Right now, we don't have anything like that. Right now, we have a logger who's there. And Danny has a good, a good relationship, but let's take care of this one. Because that's a lot of trees. That's a long distance. But, uh, in the future, I don't know how you do it, but maybe you go to the county logger, the county forester or something else and just say, "Whenever they're cutting trees, we wanna know about it." And then have the tree wardens be proactive on these things and go after this stuff. Well, because had they marked the trees and there was that maple, for instance, maybe you wanted to keep that maple. They could have marked that maple. And that's what I heard.
They were all marked to be cut.
Well, yes, they could have unmarked it. Maybe, maybe. And that's what I mean by being proactive. I don't mean going after, after it looks like that, but before it looks like that. And, and so you need somebody who's gonna be proactive and go actually go do it. And he's gotta have some sort of authority, so, but that's something you gotta think about.
Well, I think you have two issues here. I think you have this, this particular issue, and then you have the, the issue for future. So why don't we, why, and I think the, the issue for future is, is more complex because you have the, the ash, the ash situation, you've got future cuttings or whatever. So maybe we just let, have the motion deal with this. And then we do, we put something on a future meeting after we talk to the, to the tree warden and figure out a policy so that we can have it. I mean, that would seem to me the way to go.
Correct. I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, so on this job, Danny, did they ask for, or did they get another, um, right, uh, access onto the highway?
No, we used the existing.
They used the existing?
That's always.
So they're using the same landing? They're pulling from two different directions to a common landing?
Yes. So they didn't ask for a permit because they already had access into it?
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, so Kathy's motion, who seconded?
Kathy seconded.
My motion.
I'll say. Now, now maybe Kathy seconded to let Danny use his, help the logger and lose, use his discretion, I think that would be a motion.
But it's good for the road, for this road.
If you have no other discussion, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay. All right, I guess, I guess Kathy and whoever, Stan, you want to stop or something?
Yeah.
How do you wanna proceed here? Do we have any recommendations?
I have a recommendation. Um, yeah, the subcommittee, uh, is made up of Rich, Thompson, myself, Stan there, Christine, Tattersall, and Suzanne. And everybody on the board has received a manual for the town health officer duties and the statutes, statutes. And we conducted several meetings. We started, um, in August of twenty-seven. And we came up with, after our several meetings, we came up with these recommendations. So the first one is, um, which we've already addressed some of these and you have already done some of this stuff. The Grafton Select Board to approve and accept a letter, um, Jay Carpen honoring Jay's longevity as a town health officer. And requesting, um, Jay Carpen's resignation, um, as a THO.
Uh, before you go on further, have we?
We, the letter's been, we, the letter, there's a copy. I have a copy of that letter.
Yeah.
Um, we did it several times. We, we added and we, we, um.
Yeah, but I'm more concerned about the second part of that.
I don't know. Chris, did you hear anything from Jay?
Um, he's perfectly willing to hand it over to Rich's day-to-day operations, but I thought we had a discussion that we weren't gonna push for our formal resignation, that we were just gonna appoint.
Have him step down. And appoint Rich to the board health.
But if you want me to request an official letter of resignation.
I feel, I feel we discussed this thing. We thought it would all be better that, that we just let it.
Appoint Rich.
Yeah, just appoint Rich. He's, he's willing to step down and don't, don't rock the boat, so to speak.
But if he, if he wasn't necessary.
The board wants it, we can certainly do it.
We can.
Well, we could try it with just the handshake deal.
Right.
And, and if that doesn't work, we need to follow up formally, then we could do that later.
Um, there was a lot of discussion around the duties of the town health officer on number two. And the committee recommended that we use the Vermont manual that addresses specific health risks and hazards to the public. And the town health officer will follow those guidelines under Title eighteen, Chapter eleven. And if you look, if you review back to that manual, there's a lot of things in it and you just can't take one or two things out of it. It's, it's, it's pretty comprehensive. Um, number three, recommend to the Vermont Department, healthy appointment of Richard as a town health officer.
We haven't done that.
So that's, I was gonna say, so that's something we have to do.
The board, do that.
Um, I would like a motion on that and then, uh, and allow either myself or Joe to sign it.
Well, can we go, let's go through the whole thing and then we'll make a motion. Can we do that?
Well, okay, but I need a specific motion.
Yeah, no, we'll get a motion for, for that.
Um, again, with our meetings and discussions, the town health officer will report public health risks and hazards to the town clerk, town administrator, and the select board. And record, um, the complaints, the inspections, the investigations, and resolutions will properly be filed and recorded in the select board's office.
That's an important one because we have very, we have no records.
Hasn't been done in twenty years. Um, and as we know, but it's stated here, that the Grafton Select Board will be responsible for legal fees and expenses from any resolutions or any complaints, um, he receives and resolves.
Well, do we need a, well, because we're gonna be responsible, I don't know how much money this is, do we need to add a line item to the budget?
Not sure, but anytime he, the town health officer, um, pursues a complaint that he knows is gonna be legal fees, he has to come to the board first.
Right, but all I'm saying is that if, if he comes to you, if you have a five hundred dollar legal fee or whatever the case might be, do we need, do we need to, about budget meeting with Kim, do we need to have a line item now for this?
But you've already got legal fees in the, already in.
Right, but legal fees and, and for health, you might wanna keep them separate. I don't know. I don't either. Just, just a question.
Yeah, I, I would think so.
Yes.
To enforcement, it should be by ticket. And so, and I keep saying this, you need to have a ticket system.
I, I actually, we, we have a ticket system. Well, according to the, uh, um, what was I, and Kim?
Have you seen the tickets?
I have not seen it, but it's.
They don't exist.
Well, it's already in a policy somewhere that the town, through the town clerk, has, has the tickets. And I sent her an email one time and she never got back to me. I, I asked her specifically about that, and she never got back to me.
You sign it, you, you, you do a system with the, I'm gonna say traffic court, 'cause that's what it is. It's the, it's the judicial court. And you have to have a clerk in charge of that. That better be whoever's gonna issue the ticket, because those tickets, he has to. That better be whoever's gonna issue the ticket, because those tickets, he has to literally guard with his life. Because if he starts to write one and avoids it, that ticket has to go in and explain why he voided that, okay? And every ticket is accounted for. So if they send you three books of tickets, you lock up three and you say if you're using the other one, I mean, it's really, really strict. And then there's a strict procedure, it's a simple procedure, but a strict procedure for giving the ticket out, sending it into them, registering it there, how the fine is paid, and so on. If you have a ticket system, you're rarely gonna need attorney fees because when the guy gets his first fine of fifty dollars, that he gets twenty-five dollars as he pays it, and the next fine is two hundred and fifty dollars and a hundred and twenty-five if he pays it, you don't need an attorney, because they'll pay it, the court will order it. And so, and you can get injunctions through the traffic court too, so you need to do that system.
Can we add that here, that we develop a ticket system? Because why should, why should the town, the town people pay for legal fees for somebody who screwed up? I mean, you know, why are we burdened with that?
I don't think we need to develop it. I think this system's already in place and it's a parallel system to the one we had for the town fire wardens. Essentially, they issue a ticket to a burn, somebody burning and...
But shouldn't it be violation of the law?
And it's essentially the same format as using the. Yeah, and Bill doesn't have a ticket that he issued. I've never seen. Hey, I know he does, because I have paperwork, I signed the paperwork when he got the book. But, but.
Well, I don't think we, I think you're right. I don't think we have to develop.
We don't need to develop, it's already in place. We just gotta go get it.
But I think Joe's right. I just think there should be something on that, we worry expenses for resolution and complaints.
Well, I disagree. You need a, you need a health officer enforcement policy and you better have a woods board enforcement policy which spells out how you're gonna, what the fine is and how you're gonna enforce it. And you're gonna enforce it through whatever it is, nineteen VSA, whatever the health thing, something Vermont state statute, this, that, and so on. You have to have a system and it has to tell you how.
Well, we're stating statutes that exist, we're not developing those statutes, is what I'm saying. We may have to have something in there that says, according to Vermont statute X, Y, Z, but we don't have to develop that statute.
That's correct. You have to have a policy.
Oh, sure, I'll agree with that.
So I think what has to happen is once we do the recommendations, then the committee should develop the policy for the health officer. And then whatever that policy is, then we need to approve that, whether it's tickets or anything else.
Well, I think the Department of Health can help with that too.
Yeah, of course. Well, I know, go to another town and just get, see what they're doing. Why are we, why are we at the wheel if you don't have?
Number six, the town health officer will keep a record on file of the time spent on complaints. The select board will reevaluate the town health officer's really stipend of a thousand dollars to reflect proper compensation for his duties performed.
So what you're saying is that for the next budget, we're still gonna put a thousand dollars?
Yes. The select board will consider prorating the compensation for Jay Carpen's time as health officer for twenty-nineteen if duties were performed. I think he did receive a thousand dollars.
If he's already received it, then I guess we're done, right?
From twenty-eighteen to March of twenty-nineteen. Grafton Select Board will arrive at compensation for Richard Thompson's compensation as deputy THO starting this year, June of twenty-nineteen.
Alright, just at some point.
I thought you said five hundred or something.
We probably just should either compensation as deputy health officer, because if you just, if you're gonna make this a policy or something and you have Rich Thompson's name in there, you probably just don't wanna have an office in there as opposed to the name of the person associated.
I'm reading about state laws on health officer right now. And part of our issue is addressed here. The commissioner may remove local health officer at any time for cause, and they're referring to the state health officer. So all we really need to do is write a letter to the state office, which it's a dual appointment. It's a town appointment and it's a state appointment. All we have to do is write a letter to the state health officer and say, we would like to have Jay's name removed and we'd like Rich's name put in place.
Well, we do that and we try to pursue exactly at the time, we're a little bit skittish on it, if you want to know what, for cause, what's.
Because we're putting a new one.
But can I correct you? It's very rarely that the commissioner will go to cause. They don't like to do that. They like to keep it clean. That's why they said you need to ask him for a resignation in writing. That was pretty clear when we talked about it.
We did pursue it, the for cause.
Well, why don't we try it and if they want a recommendation letter, then you have to get one, you know?
It's resignation.
And I think they know the situation with him.
I'm sure they do.
We spoke to them.
I'll call and ask them that specifically.
Alright, okay.
And number nine, Grafton Select Board, along with the Grafton Town Clerk, shall continue to follow current septic funding policy ordinances and ticket system for the town of Grafton. That's where you spoke about the ticket system for septic. Um, Grafton Select Board, along with town clerk and town administrator, shall inform the town health officer of any new or changes in ordinances or policy that relates to health risks or hazards to the public. Any health risk complaints reported to these offices shall be given to the town health officer. And eleven, any permits or correspondence with the state concerning any portable water, septic issue received by the select board or town officials will be sent to the town health officer.
Before you go any farther, it's potable, not portable.
Oh. Portable?
Portable means you can carry it. Potable means you can drink it.
Portable, okay.
Portable.
The town health officer committee requests future consideration by the select board to require proactive notifications of the town health officer by Grafton citizens, businesses, school, and nonprofits of any health-related issues. Health-related issues may include poor drinking water, quality, septic problems, and animal control issues.
Is number eleven already in effect? No, we had some recent septic permitting.
But there was a lot of things, if you go back through permitting some years ago, there was a lot of paperwork that came to the select board or came into the notice of the select board that I really didn't think went any farther than that. You could go back and look at permits from the state concerned specifically Grafton. And have that go back and there should be a pile of permits somewhere.
We do have them. We're reviewing them, Paul and Kim and I today, and she has them involved.
And again, that's what that addresses, the town health officers.
And yeah, Jay had signed off on those.
Yep.
Okay, so now I guess we need two motions. Bill wants a motion to make the recommendation to Rich Thompson as a health officer. Do we need a motion to accept these recommendations or how do you want to proceed with it?
I think you should. I think you should.
So.
So let's do the first motion.
Are we gonna do it in the collective, Bill?
If you're gonna do what I would do, what I would suggest with these recommendations, I would accept them and have somebody write a policy based on them.
Yes.
Okay, absolutely.
And including the enforcement.
Alright, so Bill made a motion, yes. Some people would second that?
Second.
Or you want to change it?
Bill makes the motion.
Make a motion, yeah.
I move that we accept the recommendations of the health officer's subcommittee and recommend a base of policy on these recommendations. Or write a policy based on these recommendations.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, now we need another motion for number three. Bill wants a motion that we will appoint Rick Thompson as the Grafton Town Health Officer. Some more.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Alright, Bill, that's satisfied now for the board? Okay, so let's move on to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Kathy, that's why I worked there.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Roads of Otis and Hall Ranch, I think, Bill, you might want to explain this, but you want to put out a motion to attempt to put up on the V-Trans map and set a date for a public hearing.
We, all we really have to do is in January, put these back on the map and tell the state to put them back on our map and here's the proof that they should be there. That's all we have to do. So you've actually found the proof that they should be there? Oh, yeah, they're laid out on the ground, they're on the ground and they're laid out with the description of them. And I've had Nabo and Rooney said, yes, those are the proper descriptions, because I didn't want LTA to happen again. Those are the proper descriptions for those roads.
And talking to Rooney, there's no evidence that they were ever thrown up?
Correct, yeah. So my thought was, okay, that's all you have to do. So on February twentieth, when you approve the thing, this could just be in there and you approved it done. Well, I don't think that's where you should do it. I think between now and then, pick a date in December. It doesn't have to be any certain date, because there's no requirement for any of this. And you have me write a letter to all the people whose land is affected by this to tell them, this is what you're gonna do. And you're just informing, just informing them to let them know that this is gonna happen in January and you're gonna discuss it at your meeting on whenever.
I think you should do that, I think that's the way you should do it.
Correct. The other thing that will eventually happen is the map itself will have to be corrected. The map currently shows.
That's what I just said.
Well, I know, but I'm thinking of our map, it shows where the road is now, like access to Josh's cabin. But that's not where the old town road used to be. He's developed a new access to it. So it's sort of misleading when you look at our map. That's not, that's, that's, that shows what's on the ground, but it's not how it was actually laid out originally. It's not where the stone walls are delineating.
Maybe I moved his camp then. He's in the right of way, can I just know what you get done?
No, I'm not saying he's in the right of way. I'm just saying the map shows the footprint of the access he's currently using on his land. And that's not where the old road used to be.
Well, because we have the map of the old roads. Isn't that the one that should go on the map, this one?
This is what will go on the map.
Yeah, the old map.
Correct, I understand that, but I'm just saying it's gonna change the drawing of our roads.
What have you said?
For instance, just thinking ahead, sorry.
Okay.
I don't, I still don't understand. You're gonna take these three roads and put them on the map? Like they are here, that's where they're laid out.
Correct.
But currently, the map shows where he rebuilt the road on his land. What map shows that? Actually, it doesn't show. It shows where it stopped. The road used to go there.
Because they did another map that actually.
Those maps are, those maps don't mean anything. They're really, really nice maps, but they don't mean anything. Those are not our V-Trans maps.
No, that's right. It doesn't really make difference, I don't think. Whatever the old maps show, that's what's gonna be on the new maps, correct?
Well, it's all that can be on the new.
Yeah.
I understand, never mind, just forget it, I even said it.
Okay, so how would the board like to proceed? Would you like to just, they have Bill write the letters to the landowners and?
To the butters?
Yeah, butters, I mean, and then do that. I think that's the proper way to do it.
Definitely, they all need to know about it ahead of time. They all need an invitation.
And then we'll set a meeting date and they come and.
Well, we need, we actually need to set a meeting date so he can send a letter announcing when that date is, correct?
Well, you pick whenever you want, December.
January?
How about January?
You have.
Public Jan?
The problem is, you have to send this letter back. Their letter comes out January twenty-fourth, you gotta send it in by February twentieth. I think, I mean, that's basically, the dates were last year. So I'd rather not wait till January unless you do it the very first meeting, which is like, I don't know, second or third. No, what is it?
January.
January sixth. January sixth.
January sixth?
Yes, the sixth.
So why don't we do that? Is that okay, everybody?
Yes. Now, we're not taking land, right?
No, no.
We're just putting it on a map.
Yeah.
So why do we have to?
You don't have to tell them anything, Stan, but if you don't do it, then you're gonna be back in here in March with an attorney saying, what the hell did you do to my land?
Right. I think we have to notify the landlord that.
Let them know, let them be able to prepare for a hearing then and so that they can come back, come in and argue if want to. There's nothing to argue. I agree, there's nothing to argue, but you don't want to just put it back and put a sign something to here's our road. The issue is, there's a gate installed on one of these roads, blocking, blocking the old town road. If we don't deal with it, we're gonna have the snowmobile club in here telling us, telling us that.
The difference is, all we were gonna do five minutes ago was just put it back on the map. Now we're talking about gates.
That's all we're doing.
Correct.
Yeah.
But, once it's on the map, then as legally a town road, then the ability to have a gate on it goes away.
Right. And also, we have to decide what do you want to call it? Trail, class four road?
That was my other thing. That's the other thing you do at that meeting, decide how you want to bring it back.
Right.
Okay? Because we didn't do that when we brought the other trails on. And they probably are right now, class three roads. Right now. If you brought them back, because that's, they were town roads and most likely, they were, well, they weren't really anything because you didn't have classifications, but they were probably used as town roads, which would have been class three.
And you don't want to keep them as class three, because then you gotta maintain them and all that, so.
I would call them class four.
Well, or trail.
Trail.
If I can just finish what Al mentioned about the gate. It's finally boiled down to what really happened with that gate. You've got a bunch of people that bought a piece of property in the beginning of the road. And they're out there camping, they're running through the woods, they're running wild everywhere, causing all sorts of havoc on the road. Ellsworth, who owns that property where that road is, put that gate up to keep those kids from screwing around on his roads. What he thought were his roads, okay? That's why the gate's there. So there isn't a, there isn't a person putting up a gate trying to take over a public right of way. They're trying to stop a nuisance. That's a whole reason for it.
Boils down to the same thing though.
Pardon me?
Boils down to the same thing, blocking.
As soon as he knows it's a road and it's back on the map, I'm sure he won't have any problem taking it off. That's another reason why I'd like to let them know the meeting's gonna happen. And when guys can talk to him about it then. Oh, yeah. No, we want to do this on up and up. Everybody knows about it, everybody's got a fair chance to speak about it. And I make sure that the kids that are the owner of that land that's causing all the problem comes in too. That might be a really good time to have Vast in here and put him in his place, I don't know.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Just, no?
I just wanted to know when you want to do it. So January sixth.
January sixth. Bill, is there a provision though for pent roads in Vermont where you can put up a gate?
Pent roads are allowed where you are keeping your sheep or cows or something like that in. You can have a, with the permission of the select board, you can have a gate on the road, but it has to be unlocked and be freely to enter and no hint that there is any real blockage there. No, you know, private property, none of that junk. It's a, pent road is an open road, no lock.
Alright, the next item is the public meeting with V-Town on the battery issue. And they want to know whether it's December tenth, twelve, or eighteenth?
Yeah, well, twelve is the night of the town plan. I think that should take five minutes unless you, less than. I think that, that should take five minutes unless you, unless there's a state, okay? Maybe you don't wanna do it then, she's willing to come on the eighteenth. I'd rather not have people come out twice, but it might be a completely different crowd that wants to hear about their telephones versus the people that wanna hear about a town plan. So it wouldn't hurt for it to be the eighteenth. The tenth isn't gonna work, as it turns out.
So what does everybody wanna do here? I mean, you gotta have a vote, so what's the difference?
Eighteenth works.
I would say, if we're there on the twelfth already...
That's what I'm thinking.
We oughta just do it?
Maybe they'll bring more people.
Maybe.
If you wanted, then now, the twelfth is by notice paid for, three hundred dollars here.
Oh, it's here.
Here. So let's, let's play a little devil's advocate. What happens if we have two things at night, town plan is first, and there's discussion and it goes on, and you got a VTран person sitting there wanting to talk? And we're, we're kind of disrespectful to that person to have called two meetings at the same time.
So will we front load the VTран portion?
No, what I would think you'd do is, if this is, this meeting is set for the, at six, set it for seven. Okay, now let's discuss the meeting on the twelfth. If you do anything other than, say, there's no changes, we approve what we approved last week, you're dead. The plan cannot be approved this year, it is dead, it won't be approved by January fifteenth, it is gone. There's nothing more you need to do, that's one way to get rid of it, that's somebody's plan. But if you wanted to go to a town vote, then you have to approve it exactly like you approved it the other night. You can't change anything.
That could take, I think it could take two hours, depending on how much arguing you have.
Oh, they're running here.
I don't think it's gonna take a lot, so...
You either argue or not.
Yeah.
Should be as quick as our last one.
Yeah. There's no, I mean, there's not even really a discussion of any change or corrections or anything, it's just, are we going to accept the way it is?
Well, that doesn't necessarily, I agree with you, but somebody here, one of the board of members, could decide to make a change. I'm not saying we are, I'm just saying that could happen.
Right.
Now, you know, maybe that's not the right thing to do or not, but if that happens, then it could be a long meeting. If everybody says aye and they don't want to change anything, then it goes away.
Well, not every, three to two.
Well, three to two.
Don't forget, we sent a letter to the, or correspondent back with the planning commission asking for some clarifications, so it could depend on what we do or don't hear back.
Well, if they don't, if they don't, according to what I read here, if they don't, if they don't give us the information by the twelfth, then you can say, we're not ready to do it.
I, I don't think it's a good idea that we try to do both meetings the same night.
I agree.
Let's, let's, let's allow whatever time we need for town plan and not be pushed up against VTран, and, and let's not be disrespectful to VTран. Let me tell you the other thing she told me, this is Amber Wilson, the former fire chief, or the current fire chief, I forget, and this is why, and he was on the police department too, but she said that in ten minutes, they had fifty people, and it lasted two hours. It was a really good discussion. Her presentation doesn't take that long, it's just maybe a half hour, but it takes a long time.
What do you think about the eighteenth, doing it at school?
I agree, I agree.
There'll be, there'll be quite a lot of people there, believe me, it's a hot issue.
Well, that's why I think there should be...
No, I couldn't agree more with that. Okay, what's the personnel, personnel?
Six o'clock.
I don't know what time you wanna have.
Well, let's make it at six, it's gonna go for two hours. Yes, I agree.
Okay. The personnel issue?
Oh, it has to do, well, I think you've already resolved...
Right, so I think we're done, right, with Jay? Right?
Is that what that one, I don't know.
Pretty sure that was.
We had another issue we wanted to discuss too.
Yeah.
Well, that's at the, that's at the executive session.
Well, that's why I don't know why that's on.
I don't know either, so, okay?
No, the person I think was Jay.
Okay, so that's done, there's no public comment, 'cause there's no public here.
Guy thinks same, Matt?
There's no other business, I don't think, is there? The date of the next meeting is December first, correct?
No.
Second.
Second, sorry, second. I will not be here on the second, so just, I don't know who else can't be here, but I will not be here on the second. I am out of town.
I won't be here either.
You won't? Okay, well, then there'll be three people, then you guys won't have any to be here. I'm sorry, but it just didn't work out with my wife's operation, and we put off the vacation and it's the only time we can go away and get out of here, so, anyway.
Okay, I have something already on that schedule, and I don't remember what, what it was, so I will, oh, do you want me to not bring back the contract for Danny? Or is that okay to bring back? Do you, does everybody wanna hear that? It's either gonna be what Danny said or it's not gonna be, which is...
I mean, I don't think it's a big issue, I mean, you three here are gonna be here, how do you feel about it?
Okay, and I remember the other one, and the other one is something that I think that all the way through here, I will take it off, I have to just tend to...
If it's something I think that requires the whole board, then it shouldn't be on, but if it's something my other board, I mean, deal with it, three people can deal with it, it's not a issue. Okay, all right, so now we have, we need a motion to go into executive session? I'm not quite sure where we're going here, but that's okay.
Second.
I think we're done, Matt. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we're in executive session, Matt, you can listen. All right, so...
Just don't record it.
Why leave executive session?
Let me talk about the one thing...